All right, thank you all for coming. We'll go ahead and start the session with bid opening for the Highway Department before we convene with our regular meeting. So just take a couple, and this is items one and two, and then she'll, as we go through the item list, she'll pass the rest out. Okay, the first item I have is for item one, for gas, and it is at $2.03 a gallon from National Oil and Gas Incorporated.
Well, this bid is for ultra-low sulfur diesel, but I don't see what the bid is. It's from Sunoco LP. I don't see an amount listed. Wait, oh wait, my bad. It's 321, 321.97 per gallon from Sunoco LP.
Bid to gas and the diesel separate?
Yeah, it looks like they did. And they've heard... This is also Sunoco LP.
I'll go ahead, I've got Ag Plus for gasoline. I've got a fixed bid for $2.41 and a fluctuating bid at $2.03 for item two, which is diesel. I have a fixed bid at $3, $2.99 and a fluctuating bid at $3.17.
The first one here was gasoline from Petroleum Traders Corporation, 2.5057. I'm not sure what this one here is.
This one looks like, this is the bid from Sunoco or another bid for DSLULSD2, which I'd assumed would be ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, at 2.4487 a gallon. And then from National Oil and Gas...
I don't know how you got that one because I had it in the oil later.
Well, these are, these are... It'd be a lot easier if we sent them a form and had them fill out our form. I don't know if that's not something we can do, but getting different things from every company is tricky.
Petroleum Traders Corp on their diesel fuel is 3.2673 a gallon. I don't think there's anything even in there. Couldn't find anything.
It was just UPS package.
You sure there's nothing in there? There's nothing in there at all?
Nope.
Maybe there's an envelope at the bottom? I must have forgotten to put...
We need to leave these on separate motions?
So at the end, we'll accept them, so we'll open up the rest of the items. So at the end, if we could put them back in the envelopes, just so we don't get tipped.
Seeing how, I know she's on top of things.
None of those are mine. And then when they have one for number three, and then they have two for number four.
Then it's easier for Ryan to decipher those, because there's no rule that says you have to open them and read them. You can come up here, seems like maybe if you could, not give the job, but...
Maybe next time.
If you're having trouble deciphering where the codes are.
Well, this one's a little easier. This bid is for liquid...
Can I do item three?
No, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay. Item three from Pearson Trucking Company. It is for liquid asphalt, for $670 a ton.
This is from Pearson Trucking Company for liquid asphalt. The base price is $500 a ton. They've got demurrage maybe charged $150 per hour after three hours of unloading time. So that's, can't really predict that.
This is from Asphalt Materials Incorporated. Number four, liquid asphalt emulsion. There's two prices, pickup price and delivered price. I'm trying to figure this out here. Does it matter how many, there's like four different?
Sometimes it'd be like the total, well, the one I just did had the totals at the bottom.
There's nothing there.
Per ton. Is that on liquid asphalt as well?
Minimum freight is $24 a ton, but, I mean, 24 tons, but the pickup price is per gallon, it's 2.62, or, there's four different versions of it, 2.62 to 2.32 on there. And the same thing goes for, at the same company?
Might be two copies of the same thing.
Yeah, it is two copies of the same thing.
They've actually sent multiple copies.
Asphalt Materials.
Is this company on it? We're just getting going, we got a bunch of them.
This is item number five from Holburn Sons Asphalt Materials, and it's for $95 a ton for cold patch picked up, or $100 delivered.
This is from Brooks First Construction Company Incorporated, with the county number five, by two minutes of patching material, 250 cold mix, $98 freight onboard, if we pick it up at Fort Wayne Ardmore, or $106 if they deliver it.
This is API Asphalt Paving, API Construction Corp, their 250 cold mix is 95 a ton picked up, 106 a ton delivered.
And this is from Milestone Contractors, and it is $160 a ton for cold patch, picked up at the plant.
These are for all number six.
This is item number six from Holburn Sons Asphalt. For mod surface, it's $42 a ton, for base binder, it's $65 a ton, for pea gravel, it's $68 a ton, for base binder, number nine, it's $68 a ton, for number five, base binder, it's $68 a ton, and number 11, $61 a ton, all picked up at the plant.
This is also item number six, HMA base binder and surface from Milestone Contractors LP in Fort Wayne. For base, picked up at their kimmel plant, $60 a ton, binder also picked up at the kimmel plant, $66 a ton, and surface, 9.5 millimeters, also picked up at the kimmel plant, $75 a ton.
This is also number six from Brooks Construction. This is at the Ardmore Plant, base is $56 a ton, binder's 57, surface is 68.
For item number seven, it's from Great Lakes Chloride, for calcium chloride, for 38% solution, it's $243 a ton, for 42% solution, it's 2.56 per ton, and that's all delivered.
Item number eight is all of these?
I haven't opened mine yet, so I would assume so.
Oh, you're thinking you just drew the seven?
Yeah, mine was seven.
Okay.
So I have four items on mine. Do you have more than that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll start with mine while you look at yours. For item number eight, it's from Levy Solutions. Item number one, DuraBerm, 3,000 tons, $5 a ton. DuraBase, 3,000 tons at $5 a ton, half-inch chips for 3,000 tons at $18 a ton, and slag sand at 3,000 tons at $5 a ton.
Is that it? This is also for item number eight, from Fox Contractors Corporation, doing business as Kimmel Sand and Gravel. They have freight onboard at the kimmel pit. Number nine, material is $15 a ton, number 12 is $16 a ton, pea gravel is $15 a ton, number 23, sand is 6.50 a ton, or 53 is $16 a ton, 24 sand is 6.50 a ton, bank round is $6 a ton, winter ice aggregate is 6.50 a ton, voluntary alternate number two is, and these are all picked up at kimmel freight onboard, $25 a ton, voluntary alternate number eight, $15 a ton, voluntary alternate number 73, stone, basically, $15 a ton also. Those are delivered prices, and then, those are picked up prices, and then delivered prices are 21.60 for number nine, 22.60 for number 12, 21.60 for pea gravel, 13.10 for sand, 22.60 for the 53s, 13.10 for 24 sand, 12.60 for bank round, 13.10 for winter ice aggregate, 31.50 for number twos, 21.50 for number eight, and 21.50 also for number 73, which is the stretch line, I believe.
This is item number eight from Speedway Sand and Gravel, Speedway Sand and Gravel at the Kimmel Plant on US 331, Mileside Kimmel. It's loaded on county highway trucks by our loader, so it's FOB. Phil gravel, 8.50 a ton, bank gravel, 8.50 a ton, bit number 53, commercial, is 12.50 a ton, 73 commercials, 12.50 a ton, number five gravel is 17, number eight gravel is 15, number 11 gravel is 14.50, number eight cap gravel is 15, number 11 cap gravel is 14.50, number 23 cap sand wash is 13.25, number 24 cap sand is 13.25.
This bid is also for item number eight, from Wolf Lake Gravel Incorporated, I'll be in Indiana. For number 53 gravel, picked up there at $16 a ton, delivered is $21 a ton, pea gravel, picked up at $16 a ton, delivered is $21 a ton, bank round, $8 per ton picked up, or $13 delivered per ton, screened bank is 9.50 picked up per ton, 14.50 delivered, number eight gravel is $17 picked up per ton, $22 delivered, and number 23 sand is 5.50 picked up per ton, or 10.50 delivered.
For item number nine, it's from IMI Incorporated. It's for number nine limestone, and they all have different sizes, so I'll read them off for each size. Number one, $15.75, number two, $15.75, number two, commercial, $12.95, 53.73, $15.75. 53.73, commercial, $12.95, number eight, nine, $17.60, number eight, $16.75, number 11, $17.50, number 11, commercial, $15, number 12, $19.95, riprap, $16.70, stone sand, $11.80.
This bid is also for number, item number nine limestone, from Fox Contractors Corporation, doing business as Kimmel Sand and Gravel. And different grades of limestone, for number one, they're at $21 a ton, for number two, they're $21 a ton, for number five, $29.50 a ton, number eight, $24 a ton, number nine, $32 a ton, number 11, $30 a ton, number 12, $30 a ton, number 73, they're $21.80 per ton, 53, they are $21.80 per ton, and for riprap, they're $26 a ton. Was it probably picked up? I don't, I don't think it specified.
Speaking of Ryan, look at it in more detail.
This is item 10, limestone delivered to Willie County Highway Department. From Fox Contractors, doing business as Kimmel Sand and Gravel. Number one's $18.50 a ton, number two, $18.50 a ton, number five's $28.90 a ton, number eight, $25.50 a ton, number nine, $31.50 a ton, number 11, $29.50 a ton, number 12, $29.50 a ton, 73s, $21.20 a ton, 53s, $21.20 a ton, riprap, $25.50 a ton, stone sand, $18 a ton.
Yeah, do we, do we need to read all of each bid, or can we?
We were just gonna say we were gonna post the schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
So these are heavy equipment, number 13, heavy equipment rental, and anyone would like to, can contact Highway Director Ryan Getz, or we'll try to get them posted on our website?
I would read the, at least who bid.
Two bids, yeah. So this one's from Gross Greenage.
I have one from N State Excavating.
This one is from Shankster Brothers from Silver Lake, item number 15 as well.
This is from Gerald Pettigrew, and that must be his LLC.
This one is from Tri-County Excavating out of Osian.
I have one from Spa Services, LLC in Albion.
This one's from Eric Sheets. It's from Doctor Excavating, again, heavy equipment rental, number 13.
This is Evelyn and Devon Shuman.
Patriot Excavating.
This is from Tim Gray, equipment rental.
And this last one's from Miller Excavating, Ken Neller.
Eats &amp; Suns Bulldozing Incorporated. And Fear Now Farm Greenage LLC.
This is from Fox Contractors Corp, doing business as Kimmel Sand and Gravel for equipment rental. Coming from Seaver Brothers, Albion.
Yeah, I think it's good, it's good.
That's 10, item 10.
So that's item 10.
These are Brad Wright, this is for 13 equipment rental. 440 Dirt Company.
Oh, some of them are just bigger and loose.
This is from L.I. Excavating for equipment rental. Ethan Lamont. Heavy equipment, big on that one. Seaver Brothers, and then there's one from Brooks Construction also. That's from Brooks, heavy equipment rental.
This is from Deco Metal Culverts, it's for different prices on corrugated pipe culverts and different things, and it's in the whole pack, so, Ryan, I don't know if you can, if anyone wants to see that, if you could have this available?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
This is from CivilCon, rider number 14. Greenage soil and erosion materials.
This is from St. Regis Culvert Incorporated Indianapolis for Culvert.
Okay, that includes our highway bid opening. I would entertain a motion to take these under advisement. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Sorry, everyone had to sit through that. We'll go ahead and convene with our regular meeting, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first item on the agenda, Jim Johnson with Council on Aging.
You will have a copy of this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This is the, as you remember, we, I come, and my predecessors came on a quarterly basis. We filed an application with the Department of Transportation. These funds were based upon an application that Leslie Blakely made back in two thousand four, twenty-four. And then I did the one from last year, so this, these just all roll back to those. So Indiana funds have all been used. So what this represents is the fifty percent federal numbers that will come to us. Again, does not come out of Whitley County coffers. It comes from the feds. And as our pass-through, through the local government, that comes. I just need signatures from you to approve that. Just to give you an update too, last time I came, I didn't bring any kind of report for our application funds. But we're still averaging well over a hundred trips a day. We deliver people to work, doctors' offices, school kicking back up. We do take kids to school. I've, I've had that question a lot. It's like, well, why does the school take up those kids? Well, some people go to work early, drop their kids off at a babysitter, and that babysitter is not in the bus route for that child's school. So that's where we fill in. So we take a lot of kids that way. And of course, we do a lot of Medicaid runs and VA trip runs and all. And we're on track to be traveling over two hundred thousand miles, mostly in Whitley County this year. You'll start seeing on our buses too, some advertising Mobility Pluses there. Five Lakes is coming soon, and several other businesses have come on board. So the, the amount that would be coming from NDOT to you and then to us would be sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for quarter three. Any questions?
Move to approve the agreement. The section fifty-three eleven, oral transit agreement between Willie County Commissioners or Willie County Transit as presented.
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
And at any time, any of you, this actually goes for anybody, wanna stop by, get to work, see what we do, day in and day out, would love to have you come by. Thank you.
There's only room for one signature line. Next on the agenda, Brad Allen, the county's engineer.
Good afternoon. So a number of things on here, I guess we'll just go in order. We'll start with the ADA Transition Plan. This is just basically how, or how we plan on replacing or improving all of our ADA features, both at our facilities and in the right-of-way. The ones that are deficient or non-existent, and how we were gonna bring them up to ADA standards. The only thing that has changed this year is that we've basically acknowledged the fact that we transferred the former jail out of our possession. And so all of the ADA features that were associated with it will be removed from the inventory. And then likewise, the new jail will have to inventory the features and assess their ADA, you know, if they follow ADA or not. Now, it's a brand-new facility, theoretically should be good. So that's it on that one.
Does that need a signature? I don't see a signature.
I don't think it needs a signature, just adoption, go to adopt. And I don't know if we can do that, all three of these, at the same time. There's only one of them that needs a signature. But there's the ADA Transition Plan, the Title VI Plan, and the Title VI Policy.
You can do them all at the same time.
Yep. So the Title VI documents are basically just updating dates and staffing information.
Okay. I'll move to approve the ADA Transition Plan as well as the Title VI Plan and Policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
So for the NDOT signature authority, this is basically authorizing one of you to be the person who signs NDOT contracts via the DocuSign portal. This was previously Chad Banks. And so NDOT just requires an ordinance showing one authority, a resolution naming an individual, or meeting minutes which delegate legal authority to one individual. So that's why I'm here.
I'll move to allow Commissioner Basin to sign the NDOT signature as presented.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay, and then there is a consultant agreement on here. This agreement is to hire RQAW Corporation to finish the design of our One Hundred South Reconstruction Project, which will be funded by the Redevelopment Commission. This contract, or the agreement, was reviewed by the county attorney, who's also RDC's attorney. And those comments were incorporated in the latest copy, and they agree with everyone. Any questions?
I move to approve the consultant agreement with RQAW on the One Hundred South Project as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
So then the last item on here for me, the signing of the bridge replacement plans. We're not quite ready to do that today, so we'll try to do that next time.
Okay. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Scott Wagner from the Health Department.
I'm here to discuss the two items that were tabled at the last meeting, which was the Wellness Program and HFI Contracts. You guys approved the Health Record Heart Association Contract in November. Any questions on Wellness? We gave you the updated version, which went from ten percent for employee, five percent for spouse, to fifteen and ten, respectively. You have the numbers there. Just need a favorable pass to take it to council tomorrow and see if they're willing to do that. As far as the details of the Wellness Program, that all stays the same. Just talking about the demo.
I think it makes sense with the last meeting that we had regarding our health insurance costs. The employees have actually done a very good job. Not going to the ER when they don't need to, things like that. So I think it makes sense to, if they wanna do more for their health, to reward them. And it's not a huge increase. So I think it would make sense to encourage them to be healthier.
Is that a motion?
It can be.
Say it. It sounded like a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'll take that. Thank you, I'll take that to council tomorrow. The second thing was HFI Contracts. I had sent them out before, Andy had reviewed them. You have six partners on there. Will need a signature of the chairman if you approve of those. Again, all this money is from HFI, from the state that's given us. This year's amount, which has actually increased to one hundred eighty-one from one seventy-nine, and then carryover from the eleven sixty-one fund, which is HFI, which I will hopefully get appropriated in January. And that's for the six partners. Any questions on partners? You also got their KPOs that they have to report on, some monthly, some quarterly, some by annually.
This is, then we talked about last week, right?
Yes, these are the partners that get-
Different school corporations?
Correct. So we sent out, some of them are the same partners that we had this year, sent out asking for their budgets. And then we try to, so we make sure that they are bringing that information to us so that we can report to the state in exchange for the money.
I'll move to approve the Health First Indiana Funding Contracts as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Yeah, once you get them from, then I'll have our partner sign it, then I'd like to date them until the appropriation in January, then I think they should be able to get their first check by the third week of January. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Josh Smith, Veteran Service Officer.
Good afternoon. So just a little update, pretty much everything in the office is going same as usual. It's been a fairly busy year this year. And I think I've mentioned before about wanting to try to get to about five hundred veterans throughout the year. So as of right now, we're at four hundred and eighty-six. And that was, quite a few people came in at the end of last month.
Pretty good, pretty good run there, last ten days or so.
Yeah.
You're at four sixty, I think.
Yep, so, so we're looking like we're gonna hit that, which is good. And hopefully each year, continue to up those numbers and everything. Starting to get a lot of people from outside the county as well coming here. You know, ones that are trying, you know, from Four Way, and they try to come in. But with Four Way being so busy, they just, you know, they're booked out, so they come over here. Just fine with me, rather be busy than slow. Still been going out to the middle school every quarter for their discovery class for the enlistment. And actually had a last-minute phone call from one of the seventh-grade administrators asking if I could come out and talk to them. So I said, yeah, sure, 'cause who they had, had to back out, they couldn't do it. So getting out there, getting involved with a lot of different things, and seeing good results from it.
So just for the public that may be watching what we're doing here, Josh Smith is our Whitley County Veteran Service Officer, and he is a full-time position. He's here eight to four-thirty, Monday through Friday. Tremendous resource. If you are watching this, if you're a veteran, or you have a family member, or a friend, or you know someone that's a veteran, that has had trouble getting VA benefits, or just about anything veteran benefit-related, reach out to Josh. He's a tremendous resource, and he knows, he knows who to contact and where to look. And so we're very fortunate to have him on board here, and just trying to build some public awareness around him and his role. Thank you, Josh.
Yep, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, twenty-twenty-six service contract. This is Washington Township Fire Department. That is with JK Communications on servicing one of the towers that we utilize to help dispatch some of the fire departments within the county. After talking to our attorney, we need to get that amended and have it say commissioners, since we are the one signing the contract and paying for it. So I believe you're gonna make a few adjustments and send it over.
Yep.
So I know JK is wanting this signed, so if we could, I would like to approve it today based on their attorneys accepting our changes.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six service contract for the equipment owned by the Washington Township Fire Department, but maintained by the county, pending those acceptance of those changes.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Stacy, motion carries. Purdue Extension Contractual Service Agreement. Every year, we sign this with the extension office. It outlines what the county provides to the extension office, and then what we're gonna get for the funds that they receive. Andy looked it over, and he found just a few minor clerical errors, it sounds like. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Purdue Extension Contractual Service Agreement as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is For the Record Renewal Agreement. Has anyone here for that? So Angela, you might have to help me. It's my understanding that this is for the courthouse on recording different proceedings and whatnot.
It's for the jail.
For the jail?
Yeah.
Has everyone had time to review that?
Yeah. I'll move to approve the agreement with New Era For For the Record Renewal as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And it looks like there's only room for two signatures. Okay, next item on the agenda, CYI Contract with Shoes &amp; More. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at that?
Yes. I will move to approve the Conflict of Interest Contract with Shoes &amp; More as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
And just as a way of clarification, the, and I had several people ask about this when I posted our agenda. The state came up with a new statute that anytime a county employee receives income from the county for, other than their wage, they had to fill out a conflict of interest form. Well, it made a unique situation for us here in the county, because we have an employee who owns the Shoes &amp; More Shoe and Apparel Store. And it's pretty common for county employees to shop there for boots or things that they need in the performance of their county duties. And so she was having to fill one of these forms out every time. I reached out to a couple of our state legislators to see if there would be a way for her to do it once a year, so it wasn't a clerical thing that was coming up every month. And what we were able to come up with, or they were able to come up with, was this contract that will hopefully alleviate some of that burden. It's just a, basically a formality, like, you know, but we have to do it. So that's what that is.
Did you vote on that?
I was wondering, and Rob talks quite a lot.
Sorry, I talked too much, missed it out.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay. The discussion after...
Well, you asked for further discussion, so...
Yeah.
Okay, I believe we have one conflict of interest for two.
We got to vote on the contract.
You just voted on the contract.
Oh.
You talk so long, we all forgot.
That's what I was asking about.
Okay.
That was the contract.
This is Monday. Okay. I think, I think we moved to approve it, and he seconded it, and then she asked for further discussion, and that's what I told her. Oh, all right, then. Good to go. Should we vote again?
But that was the, that may have been the, this contract, the New Era one?
Yeah. I don't think we did anything on this one.
Okay, I'd vote it. Vote again.
Yeah.
No harm in voting twice.
There you go.
Do you remember what? Nobody knows.
This vote again.
Should we vote again? Okay.
Yes.
This is Shoes &amp; More.
Yeah, yeah. Because I talked too long and messed up the momentum.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll move to approve, well, we already moved to the second, and now you need to call for the vote.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Sorry, too wordy.
So we have two conflicts of interest.
Almost as bad as a lawyer.
Okay.
When in doubt, vote.
When in doubt, vote.
Okay, we have one from Jennifer Stevenson. She owns Shoes &amp; More with her husband. It is for $150 for footwear.
This is why we came up with this contract.
So you'll prove it once.
Yeah, this will be the last one we have to do as a formality.
And then the contract says, I think, up to $12,000, 10 for the whole year, yeah.
So I'll move to approve the Conflict of Interest Waiver with Shoes &amp; More as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, we also have one from DeeDee Amburgie. The contractors, Van Amse, Seal &amp; Stripe. And it is for $730 striping of new paved parking lots at work release.
I'll move to approve the Conflict of Interest Waiver with DeeDee Amburgie as presented.
Second it.
Van Amse Seal &amp; Stripe, sorry.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, while he's signing now...
He has two spots.
I had a chance to go up and look at payroll accounts payable. Everything seemed to be in order, so I would move to approve payroll.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And I would also move to approve...
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, and while they're signing those, there's one item that is not on the agenda that we definitely wanted to talk about. Debbie Beers, I think everyone knows her. If you don't, she's wonderful. She was nominated by Cindy Doolittle, the clerk. As you guys know, she's been with us for 34 years, and she's getting ready to retire, which makes me really sad. So I'm going to read quickly what Cindy had to write about her. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the county clerk's office, I would like to recognize Debbie for her 34 years of outstanding service. Throughout her employment, she's demonstrated excellence in her work, a spirit of collaboration, and a strong sense of integrity that has set an example for others. Debbie has left a lasting mark in the county and those who have had the pleasure of working alongside of her. Debbie has been a mentor, friend, and a wonderful coworker. Debbie has made an impact with so many people, and we want her to know how much we appreciate her and how much she will be missed. Respectfully submitted, Cindy Doolittle. So...
Thank you, Debbie. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you so much. Am I allowed to speak at all?
Yes, come on up.
Come on up.
Back on September 9th of 1991, there was a part-time opening in the county clerk's office, and I went and applied. And the former clerk, Judith Aker, some of you might remember her, wonderful lady, wonderful clerk, hired me and gave me a chance. I didn't know what I was getting into. Clerk's office can be hard at times, as I know a lot of you understand at your own departments, but it's also extremely rewarding. I feel like that I was given an opportunity to put my name on the list of all the people that have come before me to serve this wonderful community. The voters of this community gave me eight wonderful years to be the clerk of the court, and I am so honored. I want to thank the commissioners for this opportunity. I especially want to thank my friend and my boss, Cindy. The people that I work with, the employees of the county clerk's office, are wonderful and dedicated and love this community and love the office and the work that they do. And on top of that, all of you, I have made so many friends, and the county government, Whitley County Government, so many friends. I want to tell you that I am honored and privileged to be a coworker with all of you and to count many of you as my friends. And I do love this community, and I do hope Whitley County Government, and I appreciate you all, and thank you for this honor.
Okay, our last item on the agenda is the previous meeting minutes. Have we all had a chance to look at those?
Yes, they are accurate to the best of my recollection, so I'll move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, which was November 17th, 2025, as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay. Yes, all right. Now is the public portion. If anyone would like to speak, we'll allow for three minutes a person. So if you'd like to speak, please come up, have a seat, say your name for the minutes.
Everybody wants.
Andy, do you have anything?
No, nothing more.
Tiffany?
See?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for coming. I hope you have a wonderful rest of your week. You will join the meeting.